Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for being here and to our listening audience at home, Sutus Massey, for tuning in. The Committee on Education, Air Transportation, and Statistics Research and Planning will now convene this public hearing. Today is Wednesday, November 13, 2019, and the time now is 8:07 a.m. For the record, in accordance with the open government law, public notices were sent out via email to all senators, stakeholders, and all main media broadcasting outlets on November 5, 2019, to meet the five-day notice, and the second notice was on November 7, 2019, to meet the 48-hour notice. Notice of today's public hearing was also available on the Guam Legislature's website. I'd like to thank Senator Telo Taidegui for being here this morning. And today, the agenda for this hearing includes just one item, and that is Resolution Number 249-35 LS, introduced by Vice Speaker Talina Nelson and myself, Senator Amanda L. Shelton, that is relative to supporting the Guam Department of Education with its effort to address its high-risk designation and specific conditions and returning financial management and control over federal funds. We are expressing our support for the Guam Department of Education's efforts to address the high-risk status and specific conditions set for the department. The Guam Department of Education has been designated a high-risk grantee since 2003 with specific conditions. These conditions were imposed by the U.S. Department of Education. GDOE was required to contract a third-party fiduciary agent to oversee the financial management of federal grants. Annually, the TPFA costs GDOE between $2.5 to $3 million. During federal fiscal year 2007, U.S. Ed required GDOE to develop a comprehensive corrective action plan to address specific issues associated with GDOE's high-risk designation. In 2010, GDOE contracted Alvarez &amp; Marsall LLC, A&amp;M, as a requirement by the FFY 2009 amended special conditions. GDOE maintained this contract for seven years and is currently in negotiations for a new TPFA contract. Total payments to the TPFA have amounted to $20.2 million, of which $7.8 million was paid with federal funds and $12.4 million has been paid with local funds. In 2014, GDOE reinstituted its internal audit office, strengthened its fixed assets and procurement divisions, and implemented its MIC program, resulting in the best audit performance experienced by GDOE. In FFY 2015, U.S. Ed acknowledged GDOE's transition plan for a gradual transition that will result in the removal of the TPFA requirement. GDOE has fulfilled its commitment to secure the necessary human resources needed to meet objectives and milestones indicated in the transition plan. Currently, GDOE manages the inventory of its fixed assets and procurement of federally-funded goods and services. In 2016, as required by the FFY 2015 Special Conditions Letter, the IAO began testing the standard operating procedures deemed critical in addressing GDOE's high-risk designation. Since 2002, GDOE has reduced its number of findings from 28 to two and questioned costs from $894,408 to $0 in fiscal year 2016. As a result of the improved audit performance, GDOE qualifies for a designation as a low-risk audity, but because of the continued U.S. Ed high-risk designation, GDOE remains status quo. GDOE's standard operating procedures have been updated, allowing for efficient, effective, and proper administration of the grant. Through comprehensive planning, GDOE implemented sound management principles, including regular communication between the appropriate program and fiscal personnel to ensure grant activities are carried out as described in approved grant applications. Over the past six years, GDOE has taken major steps forward to address its staffing and management needs relative to improving financial management of federal funds. That includes hiring staff in critical positions, bringing strong leadership and focus to the procurement area, fixed assets and internal audit officers, offices, completion of standard operating procedures, extensive training for employees, and development and testing of internal controls. On May 29, 2018, Superintendent John Fernandez, in a letter to USDOE, requested reconsideration of the special conditions that have been imposed on GDOE. On October 4, 2018, Director of Risk Management Service at the United States Department of Education developed a reconsideration evaluation plan, which includes critical actions, milestones, and timelines to guide GDOE in addressing any remaining deficiencies identified by the department in need of completion. Because GDOE demonstrated successful completion of tasks included in the reconsideration evaluation plan, U.S. Ed prepared to modify or remove the special conditions, including the removal of the TPFA oversight when appropriate. I'd like to also recognize this morning our speakers, Tina Brosman-Yarbarnes, for being with us, and now I'd like to call up anyone who is here who wishes to testify on the resolution. We have signed up this morning, Ms. Kelly Sacola from the Department of Education, who has signed up in support of the resolution. Come up? Good morning, Ms. Sacola. If you could please state your name for the record and begin when you're ready.
Hi, good morning. My name is Dr. Kelly Sacola, and I'm the Deputy Superintendent of Education Support and Community Learning. Good morning, Speaker. Good morning, Senator Shelton and Senator Taidegui. Thank you very much for having this bill and presenting this bill today. I am here on behalf of the Superintendent of Education, Mr. John Fernandez, who is in Washington at this point in time. He's prepared a testimony and provided that to Vice Speaker Nelson, and I'm just going to read that on his behalf. So again, Hafaday, senators, on behalf of the Guam Department of Education, I write to thank you and Senator Amanda Shelton for introducing Resolution 249-35 relative to supporting the Guam Department of Education with its efforts to address its high-risk designation and specific conditions and returning financial management and control over federal funds. As this testimony is being delivered, the Guam Department of Education Board Chairman, key members of the GDOE team, and the Superintendent of Education are preparing for a meeting in Washington, D.C., to address this very issue. Your resolution could not come at a better time. In 2003, the U.S. Department of Education placed GDOE on high risk and described the department as being unaudible. In 2007, USDOE placed special conditions on GDOE's use of federal funds, including a requirement to implement a comprehensive corrective action plan, the CCAP. In 2009, after determining that GDOE had failed to make significant progress, the special conditions were amended to include a requirement for a third-party fiduciary agent, TPFA, to manage GDOE's federal education funds and to develop a new CCAP for implementation. To date, GDOE has paid out approximately $25 million in local funding to pay for the TPFA services. The CCAP outlined a set of items that needed to be addressed and completed, focused on areas of financial management, system procurement, property management, employee time tracking, and internal controls. In 2012, GDOE implemented its new financial management system, the Tyler Muniz System, which is a more modern, user-friendly platform than the prior one. As part of implementation, GDOE engaged in training its employees and updating or developing standard operating procedures based on the new system. Also, beginning in 2014, it took steps to strengthen and expand its internal audit office by selecting a chief internal auditor, hiring more auditors, and focusing the work of the office on the areas aligned with the CCAP. By November of 2017, based on GDOE's gradual progress in completing the CCAP, preparations were made to submit an official request to USDOE for reconsideration of the special conditions. Over the next few months, GDOE worked on drafts of the request with USDOE, submitting the official request in May 2018. In June 2018, USDOE acknowledged receipt of the request for reconsideration and began working with GDOE to determine how to move forward. Over the next few months, USDOE began to share drafts of reconsideration evaluation plan, the REP, outlining the items that needed to be submitted and validated before decision would be rendered. The REP was approved and implemented in January 2019, complete with action items, timeframes, and identified responsibility of parties. All items and information submitted for review were required to first be validated by the chief internal auditor before being submitted to USDOE. USDOE, in turn, would conduct virtual reviews of the information as well as scheduled onsite visits. Two pre-assessment visits took place in 2019, including one in May 2019 and the other in July 2019. Over the past year, USDOE has also deemed four of the seven special conditions to have been met, including the requirements for a single audit, prompt access to information, program-specific conditions, and program compliance. This leaves three conditions in place, including the requirement for a TPFA, completion of the REP, and four specific activities to be conducted by the TPFA. With GDOE on track to complete the REP by the end of December 2019, the Superintendent has requested meetings with USDOE officials, including Assistant Secretary Frank Brogan, who oversees elementary and secondary education for USDOE, and who has been key in moving the process forward. GDOE is requesting that upon its completion of the REP, USDOE schedule and conduct its final onsite assessment within the first three months of 2020, in order to be able to render its decision prior to July 1 of 2020. We believe that we have made tremendous progress in addressing all of the areas of concern that led the department to be designated as high-risk and that we have built the capacity to sustain these improvements. A key component to the progress we have been making has been support received from our key elected officials, including the governor, legislature, congressional representative, and public auditor. The one Guam-team approach is critical to our success, and therefore, we appreciate the introduction of Resolution 249-35 to offer the legislators support and hope that the resolution will be passed in short order. Thank you again for the confidence and support demonstrated by the introduction of Resolution 249-35. The Superintendent firmly believes that we are on the right track to obtain USDOE's support in removing our high-risk designation and special conditions, and the legislature's support will surely assist us in achieving this longstanding goal and objective so that resources currently spent on TPFA can be returned to our schools and classrooms. Thank you.
Sutus Massey, Dr. Sacola, and I'd like to ask if any of my colleagues have questions for Dr. Sacola regarding her testimony on behalf of the Superintendent.
Sutus Massey, Madam Chair, and thank you for hearing this resolution on behalf of the Oversight Chair. I want to thank you, Dr. Sacola, for being here. The meeting in Washington right now, will that, will they be sharing the perspective of what has been submitted to us today in our efforts to truly try and get off of high risk?
Yes, most definitely. The meeting that they are going to today or this week is something that was planned and definitely a continuation of the collaboration and the work that needs to be done to have Guam's voice, you know, and the efforts that we've made with the Department of Education be heard and validated, and to really get them to listen to us and say, okay, we understand and we're moving forward with making progress. I think the Department of Education has made tremendous progress in trying to remove the third party. That has been something that the Superintendent has worked very diligently on and to ensure that all employees at the Department of Education make the efforts to ensure that we follow protocols and procedures, we modify our protocols and procedures, and that we work towards this effort so that we can work independently again and do the job that we know we can do.
Thank you, Dr. Sacola, because I want to share with the listening audience that when the Department of Education came here to Guam, the federal counterpart came to Guam and shared their meeting with us, it was their efforts in saying that Guam has made big strides since 2003, 16 years later. We've put all these programs in place. You've read the letter from the Superintendent, sharing what the concerns were in the past, what DOE has taken to, to put these programs in place that they were looking for. So I'm really hoping that with all the implementations the Department of Education has done and them being over there now, that the resolution will be great support for them to say, hey, you've shared with the legislative body that DOE has made all these strides, they've put all these components in place. What else is there to do? And I know that the resources that's being paid to the third-party fiduciary agent is quite expensive.
Yeah, quite substantial, yes.
Yeah, and wanting to get off of that is very, very important. We can take those resources and definitely use it, not just for the maintenance, but for putting it back into the classroom. So I want to say, Madam Chair, that I definitely support this resolution. I'm hoping that they could give me an opportunity to be a part of that. I want to say that we did have meetings with the folks that came out to Guam. They did share with the legislature that DOE has done a lot of its part, and what more can we do as a policymaking body to truly get us off of high risk? And I know that this is the journey that we have to take, so we hope for an expeditious support in this body, and I will ask our colleagues to support those efforts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. Senator Taidegui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, doctor.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here, Sacola, and I greatly appreciate the Chairwoman to read off the history behind it with this whole receivership. So my question is about how much money in consolidated grants does DOE receive, Guam DOE, receive?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me.
How much in consolidated grants, federal funds, does DOE receive a year?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me today.
About $100 million, sound about right, though? An estimate, around about?
Yeah, or 200, closer to 200-something million.
I'm sorry?
Closer to 200, and I believe 50 million, so.
Closer to 200,000, okay. And then every year, I believe for the first three years of this receivership, that funding was carried on by the federal government that covered the first three-year payment, and then after that, it was shouldered upon the government of Guam, if I'm not mistaken. And how much is the government of Guam paying yearly to the receiver?
Again, I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me today.
Okay. Yeah, just trying to get a little bit of history on that. So the third-party receiver, I believe it was the owner of the third-party that came in May and came in July, is that correct?
Right, the May and July, both the visits, yes.
And this is the TPFA that came to visit, right? It wasn't the U.S. Department of Education that came to visit during that time, it was just the receivership?
The U.S. Department of Education did send some people out also, yes.
As well?
Yes, as well, yes.
They accompanied the receiver as they were coming in. Do we have a report, is this the report from that, those meetings? Final reconsideration evaluation plan, the R E P?
The R E P is the report that we submitted on behalf of the Department of Education since our plan has been approved since January, that we had certain conditions to meet and submit our progress to them, and that's what you have before you.
So do you happen to have the report of the findings from the meetings this summer when they came out in May and July?
I can certainly get that for you and provide that to you.
So you do have that report?
Yes.
Oh, that's good information. That kind of tells us where we're going from there. I appreciated the chair, if you can give one to the Chairwoman, and then hopefully I can get a copy of that, too, to review it. So that being said, I'm pretty sure this report here are some of the amendments or corrections that was made, and I noticed here of the seven, it says here that of the seven special conditions that only, over the past years, has determined four of the seven special conditions have been met, four. So of the three that's remaining, what strides have you done to correct these?
So with the three of the remaining issues that we have to do, we definitely have our SOPs in place to be able to take a look at our fixed assets and to make sure that we're managing our fixed assets appropriately, all the way from the central office down to the school and the school personnel. We have training that we have had and that we hold with our employees to ensure that they understand the procedures that are in place and the operating protocols so that they can, you know, sometimes when you're at the school site, you're the one who's in charge of all of the assets that the school has, and it becomes very important to make sure that they understand as employees move from one position to another of what needs to be done and how to account for all of those assets.
So, Dr. Sacola, when will they come out again to reassess to ensure that these three areas also are met as the other four has been? How soon will they come out to reassess this? And that being said, only then will the receivership be given, will be taken away when all seven have been met.
So one of the things that they're working on when they're there in Washington, D.C. this upcoming week is that they're working to determine the dates, because the Superintendent, as he put in his letter, wants to ensure that they come out the first, within the first three months of 2020, to ensure that, you know, to review and look at where we're at in our R E P, because we're supposed to complete our R E P report to them by December. And so we're looking at, hopefully by March of 2020, that they'll come out and they'll provide that review and that final disposition.
So, Dr. Sacola, can you tell me, then, you have the Superintendent who left to D.C., you have Mark Mendiola?
Yes.
As well, who left for D.C., and you have the Oversight Chair of Education who left for D.C.
Right.
And they left for D.C. to try and get them to have a meeting for 2020, the first three months of 2020. Couldn't that be done by phone?
Right, and our chief financial officer.
And our chief, so four people out there to get, secure a date. Couldn't that be done, you know?
It seems like a good question to ask, you know, why, you know, in this, in this age of technology and everything, can we do this? But I think that the important thing is for them to see us, to meet us, to talk with us, to work with us, to hear us, and to really understand where we're at. It's one thing to get a phone call and say, hey, can we meet? But I think that the seriousness of the third-party fiduciary agent is something that we have to really call their attention to and say, you know, look, we've made progress, you know, and sometimes, again, just our miles away from Washington, D.C. puts a barrier on us as Guam, and for them to go there, I believe, is very important and sets a strong tone and message for them to pay attention to us and to listen, that we've really made progress and we're not just, you know, coming back and saying, hey, you know, we're doing what you want, and we want to get off this high-risk status.
I absolutely agree with you, Dr. Sacola, but, you know, I think it just takes one person. I've been out to D.C., and I think Superintendent is enough to go out there and push for it, but I just don't see the need for five people going out there to try and secure a date for 2020 in three months, but we all know that.
Certainly, I understand that, Senator, yes.
And we all want the same thing, there's receivership, but we know that it has to start at home with regards to addressing these other three issues that have not been addressed yet. And though, I mean, I'm supportive of a resolution that would take us out of receivership, but I don't want to see us go back into receivership after getting out.
Right.
And we have to have, put things in place that not only do we address these issues as to why we were in receivership, but moving forward, we put into place any other mechanisms that avoid us going back.
Most definitely, yes.
Like a proactive approach.
Yes.
You know, to this. So I thank you so much for being here and answering as many questions as you can for it, and appreciate all the hard work you're doing over at DOE. I mean, no doubt about it, it's one of, it's our largest agency, and it is a lot of work, so thank you so much for coming.
And Senator, you're welcome, and, you know, with the R E P, it's not that we haven't yet addressed it, it's the progress that we're making and then the final progress that they want to see. So we have made, you know, strides in all areas that we put in the R E P, and we're just going to, you know, report on our progresses through December 2019. And again, you're right, the department, and I believe that myself, as well as the Superintendent and all the deputies, feel very confident that the protocols and the procedures that we have put in place, the training that we've provided, and all the efforts that we've made from the district office all the way down to the school level are there, and the, again, the one voice, the one team, that everybody's responsible for education and the efforts that it takes to, you know, provide that service to all of our students, you know, all the 30,000 students that we have. It's really important that everybody is on board, and that's why we definitely appreciate this resolution today, and we're really happy to have you guys behind us and in our efforts to have this removed. Thank you.
Well, congratulations on the four conditions that you met, and I'm hoping there's a vast resolution for the other three right away.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you so much, doctor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. Speaker Barnes?
Yes, Sutus Massey, Legislative Secretary, Madam Chair, I think it's, thank you for giving me the opportunity to just mention from our colleague, I just received this message from the minority leader who asked me to mention and inform in this public hearing that Minority Leader Senator Will Castro met with, literally took the time and met with senior White House staff during the delegation's last trip to Washington, D.C., and in that meeting, he made a direct request to assist with the redressing of Guam's DOE's high-risk status. Assurances were provided by the White House staff that the administration will reach back to USDOE and facilitate where appropriate, and that the minority leader, former Guam Department of Education Chief Planner, who was the principal author of the first comprehensive corrective action plan, is in full support of the resolution. He apologized for not being here, Madam Chair, because he's at a meeting right now, but wanted to make sure that that information got out to the Department of Education. And as we look at the letter, Madam Chair, that was written by the U.S. Department of Education and their efforts, I'm going to say that it was very important that the team Guam go out and do that representation, because I'm very familiar, out of sight, out of mind, and if you don't get a team there to show the consideration that is needed by us and that we're asking, I want to note for the record that Margot Anderson, who is the Director of the Risk Management. who is the Director of the Risk Management Services and the Office of the Deputy Secretary, she noted, as actually expressed during our meeting, we are committed to moving the reconsideration process forward with a focus of identifying specific conditions that may be modified or removed based on Guam Department of Education's progress. We look forward to continuing to work with GDOE in support of the ultimate goal of returning G O, GDOE, full responsibility for managing and administering its department of grant funds. I, I say that, Madam Chair, with, with great importance, because as I noted earlier, that when US DOE came here and talked to us as policymakers, the majority of us were in that room, and their efforts were saying that Guam was making great strides, and I, I'm hoping that with the delegation there and with the commitment of what the Minority Leader has requested, with the White House, senior White House staff, that those efforts coming together as one Team Guam will truly, and, and our support of this Resolution 249 moving forward, that, that they will literally take us and put us up to the forefront and give us that reconsideration, and because I was very hopeful when we had those frank discussions with them, when they spent several hours in this body. So, I, please tell Superintendent Fernandez that, that the time spent here with them also, we shared our perspective, what DOE was doing, and the efforts that DOE needs to do to get that reconsideration back to us.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you very much, and I will convey that to the Superintendent. We really appreciate the support from all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Massey.
Sidhuas Massey, Madam Speaker. I'd also like to thank DOE, Guam Department of Education, for their, their commitment to getting off high-risk and their collaboration with the Committee on Education. Over the past few months, we have met with you for the updates on this plan and what your progress has been and your feedback from the U.S. Department of Education, so we are really grateful for that partnership, and I know that we will continue to work together. I think one of our colleagues had a question about how much money this third-party fiduciary agent has costed the government of Guam, so I'd like to just reiterate that the total payments for the third-party fiduciary contract has amounted in $20.2 million, that's $7.8 million that came from federal funding, and $12.4 million that has been paid with local funds since 2010, when we contracted the Alvarez and Marcel LLC firm. And so, every year, this costs us about $2.5 to $3 million. So, as the Speaker mentioned, that this is a, a huge amount of money that we're paying from the department every year, and we would like to see that going directly to student education, directly to maintenance of our schools and facilities, to provide our students with the best quality education that we possibly can get. And I do very much appreciate the Superintendent's update of the seven points that we must meet and the progress me, being made to the final three points, and I know that we have the plan, the training, the procedures in place to meet those by 2019. And again, how important it is for us to show that One Guam Team approach, and so, we spoke in the committee about our Chair, Vice Speaker Nelson, going out to this, to this meeting, and how important it was for her to show the support of the legislature, to show support from the people of Guam, that we want to get off this high-risk status, and we are committed to it, and so she, along with the DOE Superintendent and the Chairperson of the Board are there, and we wish them the best of luck, and we hope that this resolution will help them in their efforts to secure this meeting date for next year for that reevaluation, and hopefully, we see those results very soon.
Thank you very much, Senator. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much. There being no further questions. I'd like to thank everyone for being here today, for attending, and for watching at home. The time now is 8:41, and this public hearing is adjourned. Sidhuas Massey.